First item on the agenda is general housekeeping for beginning of a new fiscal year. And a vote on chairman and vice chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Brian St. Rose as chairman. I'll second it. Okay, all in favor? No more than two times over. I'll vote Dennis Markey for vice chair. I'll second that. All in favor? So any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir. There are correspondence that was received after the fact for the appeal, but other than that.
You're gonna add the oldest in our schedule, right?
It's what?
Our new business.
Okay, review and approve the minute, meeting minutes from June first. Mr. Chairman, I need to approve the meeting minutes of June first. I'll second that. All in favor? Um, there is some correspondence, an email from Robin Landis regarding the administrative appeal. That's neat to discuss anything on that. And when we move on to the oldest and support. Uh, this is a continuation for the application of administrative appeal for Michael Reynolds received equal point third on twenty twenty-two.
Should I just begin?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Amy Reynolds. This is my husband Jeff. I am here representing my son, Michael Reynolds, to appeal the denial of his building permit for fifty-five B. Cary Road. It's nice to be with you in person tonight. We had hoped to have legal representation with us, but unfortunately, because of the short notice, we were not able to. I would like to begin tonight by reading the following statement in the hopes of clarifying our position in this appeal. Towards the end of our last meeting, the representative from the church argued that there were three solid no's against this building permit being issued, citing a no from the church's attorney, a no from the code enforcement officer Bailey Peers, and a no from the town attorney. But by that time, when I tried to argue against that assumption, patience had worn thin, and I was unable to get my point across. When I said that the letter you all received from the church's attorney was almost all untrue, I was asked how could everything they were saying be wrong and what I, excuse me, what I was saying be right? And did I not see a problem with that? So I would just like to begin by explaining why that was and still is my position. From the letter from the church's attorneys from page one A, having to do with applicable zoning districts, they cite concern over whether or not any clearing had taken place in resource protection, but no clearing had taken place in resource protection. From page two, B, violation of one hundred foot minimum road furniture requirement in downtown commercial. There is no violation because there is no minimum requirement for the frontage in downtown commercial district. And C, this lot was not a legally non-conforming lot. We have never contended that this lot was a legally non-conforming lot. And the lot requirements stated here and several other times on pages three through six are wrong. There is no one hundred foot minimum road furniture requirement just requirement in the downtown commercial district. It appears they made the mistake of going by the requirements from the commercial district and not downtown commercial where there are none. Further on from pages six to seven, when they reference the date of the deed, the reason the church's easement was recorded first makes sense because it had to be in order for the easement to be binding. Despite Michael having had bought the land on March twelfth and the church not being given their easement until five days later on March seventeen. And despite the representative from the church falsely stating otherwise during our last meeting, the easement for the church was a condition for the sale of the land. It was listed as a condition on the sale of the sale on the seller's disclosure form and also on the title for the land where it states this lot is being conveyed with and subject to the conditions of a parking easement. I have a copy of both of me if anyone would like to see them. So Michael was indeed required to agree to that. To be clear, the easement was not given to the church before the sale of the land to Michael was filed. So while the easement itself technically came from the seller and not from Michael, it was owned because Michael agreed to that as a condition of the sale from SBE. Then from page seven, quote, "When SBE first caused the Reynolds Bailey lot to become a lot of record in twenty twenty-one, that lot's road furniture was illegally non-conforming to the one hundred foot minimum road frontage that had been in effect since nineteen eighty-eight at the latest," end quote. Again, the frontage requirements stated here are wrong, so the lot does indeed conform to the frontage requirement. It then goes on to state that although SBE had had the capacity to create the lot with conforming road furniture, it deliberately chose not to. But this is also not true. SBE created the lot with enough frontage to easily meet the downtown commercial frontage requirement, being that there isn't one. And while it was pointed out during one of our meetings that it's unusual to have dual lots, dual zoned lots, I would argue that SBE knew in this case it would be necessary to configure the lot in the way that it did because that frontage on Route four is what makes the lot buildable. And I would add that they still made sure to include an easement as a condition of the sale so that the church would not, would not be negatively affected. And from pages seven and eight, SBE's deed to Mr. Reynolds and Miss Bailey expressly provides that the Bailey, Reynolds Bailey lot is subject to the terms of the church's parking easement. In other words, Mr. Reynolds and Miss Bailey cannot access their property except by traveling over and through the church's parking area. While Michael's deed is subject to the terms of the easement that was given to the church, Michael owns the land, not the church, and it is the church that is being given access through Michael's land and not the other way around. Also in footnote eleven from page eight, quote, "It is therefore questionable whether the Reynolds Bailey lot has any road furniture as a practical matter. The primary purpose of road furniture requirements is to ensure adequate access by emergency vehicles to the interior of the lot. In this case, much of the fifty point six foot wide entrance to Reynolds Bailey lot will be periodically blocked by cars parked in the church's parking area," end quote. But this was also not true, as stated in the church's deed, which states, quote, "Grantee the church shall ensure that no vehicle parking occurs in the area identified as a planned existing driveway, which shall remain open for passage at all times." And I would also like to add here, end quote, and I would also like to add here that the frontage on Route four does ensure the adequate access that would be required for emergency vehicles to access the interior of the lot. From D, "The board of appeals cannot legally grant a variance of the one hundred foot minimum road furniture standard applicable to the downtown commercial district." Again, we're not asking for a variance because again, the lot requirement stated here are wrong. E, "This lot is not eligible to be built as a back lot." We have not and have never contended that this lot is eligible to be built as a back lot since we have the adequate frontage to meet the frontage requirements for downtown commercial district. F, "A simple family residence is not permitted use within any portion of the lot that is located in resource protection." Michael has never sought to build any portion of this home in any part of the resource protection zone. Having said that, I would note that according to Town Code, section thirty-eight point four point four, Division of Lots by District Boundaries, states that based on the Town Code, we would be within our rights to ask for a fifty-foot extension into the resource protection zone. G, "Any clearing done within the portion of the lot located within the resource protection district was illegal." No clearing has been done within the resource protection district. In conclusion, they state that without even considering the zoning regulations governing the resource protection district, which is ironic because that's exactly what the town attorney decided to base her opinion on, despite stating that her review was constrained only to the issues raised by the church, the Reynolds Bailey lot cannot be built upon because A, it does not comply with the minimum requirement of a one hundred foot of feet of road frontage applicable to the downtown commercial district. Once again, the lot requirements stated here and at least fourteen other times throughout their letter are wrong. B, "The board of appeals has no authority to grant a variance from the minimum road furniture requirement, and even if it did, would be recruited from granting a variance in this case because the non-compliant road frontage was created prior to the owner, to the prior owner of the lot, SBE." Again, we are not seeking a variance because there is no one hundred foot minimum road furniture requirement in downtown commercial district. When SBE created the lot, the frontage was compliant with the requirements set forth in the Town Code. And C, "The clearing is illegal because it's not the construction that has either been approved by the granting of the permit or approval because it involves a cutting or removal of vegetation to facilitate construction of the use that is not permitted in the resource protection district." And once again, no clearing has been done in the resource protection district. When representatives from the church were then asked at the second meeting during the public hearing portion the reasons why they're against this house being built and why they believe they would be harmed by it, they admitted that they had slept through the sale process because for three years no one had bought it, and they believed this was because the lot had issues with zoning. While that may be true, based on the fact that it contains two different zones, which is unusual, it is not for the reason the church implies as having to do with inadequate road furniture in the downtown commercial district. As I've just made clear, their entire argument was based in a mistake that their attorney made by arguing that there was a one hundred foot road furniture requirement in downtown commercial, and there isn't one. Rather, it is our belief that it had everything to do with the prospective buyers inability to build a house down by the water in addition to the stipulation that you must share your driveway with the church that may have prevented other people from buying it sooner. We know of at least three different prospective buyers who decided against buying it because they all wanted to build the house in a resource protection zone when that was not allowed. The church then said that they first discovered that the land had been sold because they had plans to build a pavilion behind the church now that they own the land and had stumbled across the land being cleared. They said that based on where they would like to place their pavilion, they would have to look out onto a leach field and equipment and so forth, despite the fact that the leach field will be located on the other side of the house where it will not be possible for them to see. And I don't even, I'm not even sure if they can see the house, but anyway. At that, and that any equipment would only be temporary during the building process. They also argued that a house would negatively affect their enjoyment of their property and as a result of traffic going up and down, and I would remind you that we're talking about a driveway and not a busy street, that the driveway would be, as someone put it in their face. And they argued that they had the right to reuse that portion of this driveway as an entrance to their parking area more than Michael, as the landowner, has the right to use his own driveway on the land that he owns. And this is after they were generously granted the benefit of having the easement from SBE as a condition of him buying the land. They went on to argue that they believed the driveway would change the aesthetic of a traditional forest setting that has been like that for one hundred years and is part of their identity. But curiously, they had no such problem, had no such problem with building a pavilion in that regard. When later asked why the church didn't just buy the land themselves, they said they're not in the real estate business and they would not have the funds to buy the land, that instead they had hoped this land would be given to them. In the end, because this land was too valuable to be given away, they ended up with the easement being given to them instead. And I would also like to add that despite them saying that they do not have the funds necessary to buy it, they stated to Michael in their letter that they were prepared to use their best efforts to raise the funds necessary to buy the parcel from him. They admitted that mistakes were made on their part, and it appears they only realized that once the land had sold. It seems possible they were under the false belief that no one would ever buy the land, so why should they? Like, why buy the cow and you can get the milk for free, I guess? But stating that they would be willing to raise the funds necessary to buy it from him, the implication is that they could have done that at any time during more than three years prior in order to buy the land themselves, but they chose not to. So yes, mistakes were made, not only on their part, but by their attorney as well, which is why we believe the opinions set forth in the letter from the church's attorney, which have been proven wrong, should be disregarded. Unfortunately for Michael, the church's involvement in this matter is why we find ourselves here today. When this all started with the church, the first thing Bailey told Michael was to hurry up and submit everything for the building permit application, so he did. He submitted it to her a few weeks later, but then had to wait almost five months before learning that it had been denied. Which brings me to the second no that the church mentioned, the no coming from code enforcement officer Bailey Peers. During our first meeting, Bailey states that after speaking with Michael several times, she knew he was under the impression this was a buildable lot, and she also believed this was a buildable lot, but that because of the church, of the church getting involved, she wanted to be sure all the boxes were being checked by consulting the town attorney. When the town attorney said it was her opinion that it should be denied because it didn't meet the road furniture requirement for resource protection, Bailey then explains how she, how she discussed section thirty-eight point four point four titled Division of Lots by District Boundaries with her. How the Town Code allows for the regulations applicable to a less restrictive portion of a lot to be extended no more than fifty feet into a more restricted portion of a lot. Bailey states that this was what was her reasoning why it should not be denied, but says that this is when the attorney says, quote, "It's a gray area," and this is why, and that this is why the attorney ultimately turned it down because, quote, "There is no definitive answers to how the code, how the code should be applied in this case. However, based on the overall structure and intent of the code, my opinion is that this lot does not meet the applicable road furniture requirement and is therefore unbuildable," end quote. But as Bailey then correctly points out, the attorney at this point does not even specify which zone, zone requirement she's talking about, which is when one of you suggested that maybe the attorney decided to go with resource protection requirements because there's more land in resource protection than in downtown commercial. But as Bailey states, there is no precedence for that. There, she, she said that there is nothing in the code that says you have to use the code where the majority of the land is rather than where the road furniture is. I feel like this bears repeating. There is nothing in the Town Code that says you have to use the code where the majority of the land is rather than where the road furniture is. She says that the attorney's main concern was about developers abusing it. But as Bailey correctly points out, that would not matter because it would still need separate approvals anyway, that having access to resource protection does not guarantee anyone the right to build in resource protection. And as someone pointed out during one of our meetings, just because the law is split, that should not prevent someone from using the land that's within the downtown commercial district. But even after having solid arguments against the town attorney's position, Bailey states that once she gets a letter from the town attorney, she cannot disagree with it. So that was why she ultimately had to deny the permit. In my mind, that is anything but a solid no. Which brings me to why we are here, all here tonight, meeting for the third time so that we can hear from the attorney for the town, Kristen Collins. I expect we will get clarification on her position in a moment, but as we all know, many of the statements made in her memorandum were contradictory. In her opening paragraph, she states that her review was constrained only by the issues raised in the letter dated August ninth, twenty twenty-one by a possibly union church. I believe she's referring to the letter dated September ninth and not August ninth, since that's the date on the letter that Michael received from their attorney. The subsequent letter he received directly from the church was dated September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Right off the bat, I would like to point out that the church never raised an issue about the need for this lot to meet the road furniture requirements in the resource protection district. Yet that is exactly what attorney Collins decided to place her focus on, and that's exactly what ends up being the reason for her decision. In paragraph two regarding road furniture and dimension requirements, she states how the lot in question was created in twenty seventeen when Stony Battery Enterprise split its parent parcel and that the dimension requirements of land ordinance in place today, including frontage requirements, were also in place in twenty seventeen. In other words, nothing in twenty seventeen prohibited, prohibited someone from building on this lot then, and since nothing has changed, there would be nothing prohibiting someone from building on it now. She also notes that while a substantial portion of the lot is located in the resource protection district, the whole portion of this flag lot as well as the road furniture are located within the downtown commercial district. And she states clearly here that there is no minimum road furniture requirement in the downtown commercial district. So it's not that the downtown commercial district doesn't require any frontage at all because it does by its definition in section thirty-eight point four point five point eight point two titled Boundaries and Definitions. What it does mean is that unlike other districts, there is no minimum frontage requirement. The only requirements listed for downtown commercial are for setbacks, and this lot meets those requirements. Also in footnote one, she states, quote, "It is, it is of no consequence that the lot was advertised as being within resource protection district. Its zoning is as shown on the town zoning maps," end quote. Meaning that the frontage is located in the downtown commercial district and therefore meets the, the frontage requirements for that district. But then in her next paragraph, she states that the land use code does not address hostage situations like these are to be handled, which I believe only sets up additional unnecessary confusion when interpreting the Town Code from this point forward, since we would argue that the Town Code is quite clear on how situations like these are to be handled. This lot meets the frontage requirements where the frontage sits and in the district where the house would be built and should therefore be allowed to be built on. In her next sentence, in paragraph two, she then states, quote, "The church references section thirty-eight point four point four, which provides some leeway to lots of record, lots of record existing at the time the dimension standard was adopted," end quote. Which I would just like to point out before moving on, is not true. The church never once in the fourteen-page letter from their attorney makes any reference to section thirty-eight point four point four. I mean thirty-eight point four point four, right? Attorney Collins continues, quote, "I agree that this was not a lot of record for the purposes of section thirty-eight point four point four. However, that section is intended to provide additional grace to allow the development of pre-existing lots and not to generally address how dimension requirements applying to lots spanning two districts, applying to lots spanning two districts," end quote. As attorney Collins has already pointed out by this point in her memorandum, the dimension requirements of the land ordinance in place today, including the frontage requirements, were also in place in twenty seventeen when this lot was created. So we would argue that this is a lot of record for the purposes of section thirty-eight point four point four. And when she says that section thirty-eight point four point four is not there to address how dimension requirements applying to lots spanning two districts, I would argue that is exactly what it does. Its title after all is Division of Lots by District Boundaries. She then continues by correctly pointing out, quote, "In this case, the owner is not seeking to have the standards of a less restrictive district be extended into the more restrictive district, but rather to have the dimensional requirement of frontage be applied for the district in which that dimension sits," end quote. But then continues in paragraph four by stating, quote, "There is no definitive answer as to how the code should be applied in this case. However, based on the overall structure and intent of the code, my opinion is that this lot does not meet the applicable road furniture requirement and is therefore unbuildable," end quote. Again, it's worth pointing out that he or she doesn't even state which district road furniture requirement she's referring to. She goes on to explain that her rationale for this opinion is largely based on the fact that per section thirty-eight point four point seven, the dimension requirement applies to the lot itself and that there is no basis under these provisions to consider the portion within the resource protection and the portion within downtown commercial separately. But we would argue that the fact that each district has different requirements is precisely the reason why you would want to consider each portion separately and that section thirty-eight point four point four, Division of Lots by District Boundaries, does exactly that. It states that the requirements applicable to the less restricted portion of a lot may not be extended more than fifty feet into the more restricted portion of a lot, which means that the requirements for each portion by its very definition are being considered separately. She then argues in defense of her opinion by stating, quote, "If we were to apply the frontage standard only to the district in which that frontage sits, developers could avoid more restrictive standards just by accessing any development through a less restricted zone," end quote. But as Bailey has already correctly pointed out, that wouldn't matter because they would still need separate approvals anyway. That having access to that resource protection doesn't guarantee anyone the right to build in resource protection. The way the code was set up for resource protection districts already by definition makes it impossible to build within that zone if there is anywhere else, as in another district where a dwelling could be built instead. And also, there is no precedent for the lawyer deciding to go with the resource protection requirements just because there's more land in resource protection than in downtown commercial because there is nothing in the code that says you have to use the code where the majority of the land is rather than where the road furniture is. In the third to the last paragraph, excuse me, titled Single Family Dwelling, attorney Collins states that the church argues that no single-family dwelling may be erected on the slot due to the fact that part of it is in resource protection, but goes on to say she does not believe a single-family dwelling would be prohibited if the lot were otherwise legal. And there is a footnote here that says, "While single-family dwelling is categorized as use in the land news table, shoreline zoning administrators generally understand that it's regulating the structure and not the use. For example, even though a lawn in the resource protection district is used for residential purposes, it is allowed as long as the residence itself is located outside of resource protection," end quote. So this footnote makes clear that a house can be located outside of resource protection in the case where the lot is split. Even the example she uses is one of a lot with two different districts. Lastly, before her conclusion, she addressed the church's concern about the cutting of trees without the town's permission, then states that no cutting has been done within the resource protection district, so there is no violation in this regard. She then concludes by stating, quote, "I believe the building permit should be denied for failure of the lot to meet the road furniture requirement applicable to lots in a resource protection district," end quote. Despite her earlier saying the opposite, that, quote, "It is of no consequence that the lot was advertised as being within resource protection district. Its zoning is as shown on the town zoning maps," end quote. At the risk of repeating, repeating myself, I would remind you all again what Bailey has said about there being no precedent for her to decide to apply the rules from one district, in this case, resource protection, to overrule the rules that apply to the district in which the house would sit in downtown commercial. So it is my hope that by this point I approve that the no coming for the town attorneys, the same no that Bailey has stated, was what forced her to deny this permit because once she gets a letter from the town attorney, she cannot disagree with it, which is why she ultimately had to deny the permit. It was clearly contrary to the provisions put forth in the Town Code. I'm almost finished, I promise, but before I wrap this up, I would just like to point out a couple of interesting facts that I learned about the laws governing the resource protection district as I prepared for tonight. The reason I think they're important and worth mentioning is because I believe they demonstrate why you would never want to use the frontage requirement set forth in resource protection for this lot, just because it spans two districts. In section thirty-eight point five point seventeen point eight point three, titled Development in Shoreland Areas, it states that, quote, "New roads and driveways are prohibited in a resource protection district, except that the planning board may grant a permit to construct a road or a driveway to provide access to permitted uses within a district, in within the district. A road or a driveway may also be approved by the planning board in a resource protection district upon defining that no reasonable alternative route or location is available outside the district," end quote. So even if we were to ask that the driveway come in through the access that exists presently by way of Dan Road, which we confirmed today does about, does about Michael's land, where he owns over two hundred and ninety-two feet on that side. That, that section I just previously just read from, from the Town Code, section thirty-eight point five point seventeen point eight point three, would prohibit him from doing that, since in this case, planning board would define there is a reasonable alternative location available outside the district, which would be the land within the downtown commercial district, using the frontage he has on Route four. And in section thirty-eight point five point twenty-one of the Town Code, titled Residential in Resource Protection Zone, the planning board would also in this case be prevented from issuing a permit for a single-family structure in the, in this district because certain conditions would need to be met. The first being that, quote, "There is no location on the property other than the location within the resource protection district where that structure can be built," end quote. Since in our case, there is a location outside of resource protection where the house can be built that meets the requirements for a, building a single-family structure within the downtown commercial portion of the slot, the planning board would be prevented from issuing a permit for this, for the portion of the lot within the resource protection. And so it is for all these reasons why in this case you would not want to go with the frontage requirements to build in resource protection, because there isn't a scenario here in which you'd ever be able to build in resource protection. It's exactly why we believe it sat for three years, because other potential buyers knew that they could not put the house down by the river. And this section of the Town Code also, also already makes clear that any future potential developer would also be prevented from building within the resource protection district, even if they had access to it by way of a less restricted zone, as attorney Collins suggested, because they too would be forced to build outside of resource protection area for the same reasons I've just stated. So I don't see this as being a gray area. The code is already quite, quite clear about it. In closing, I would leave you with these final thoughts. The church objected to this house being built from the start without ever trying to have a conversation with Michael and his wife about it. So right off the bat, they missed an opportunity to discover for themselves what great neighbors Michael and Ashley will be, which is unfortunate. They could have welcomed Michael and his family, as I, Michael and his family, like I hope they would welcome anyone attending services at their church. Instead, they hired an attorney to fight it, despite Michael and Ashley having agreed to the easement from SBE that was a requirement of the sale. From the letter to Michael dated September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, which was their first and only contact ever made with Michael, they say, quote, "We recognize the implications of these findings will come as a most unpleasant surprise," end quote. I think an unpleasant surprise might be rain on your wedding day. This letter from the church, as well as the letter received from the church's attorney, wasn't just unpleasant for them, it was devastating. And it is the sole reason why we are here today, meeting for the third time, eight months after Michael submitted the application for the building permit, during which time interest rates have continued to rise considerably, which is a most unpleasant surprise. From what I understand, the church meets an average of ten days out of the year for Sunday services. That's ten days of having to put up with seeing Michael and his family enjoying their home and what will still be a beautiful setting that is respectful of the beauty of nature that surrounds it. The other three hundred and fifty-five days out of the year, I believe they aren't even there. And speaking of church services, I would just like to share something of a personal note here. Just a couple of weeks ago, when I called my dad, who just turned eighty-six, to wish him a happy Father's Day before he left the church, he asked me how things were going with these meetings. I caught him up, and then he asked, "But do you even know why the church is so against living there? Haven't they ever heard of love thy neighbor?" So when I told him about the church's objection to having to look at Michael's driveway, I could tell he was upset. The only other thing he said after that was, "I wish I hadn't asked you that, Amy. I wish I didn't know that." In the end, it comes down to not only what is legal, but what is right. The law, church, would never have even needed an easement to access their parking area if this lot was not in fact a buildable lot. The fact that it is is precisely the reason why the easement was necessary in the first place. place. I hope that with the additional information I've provided for you all tonight, you will conclude that the basis for Attorney Collins' decision was clearly contrary to the provisions put forth in the town code and that for this reason you all have a chance to make things right. We respectfully ask that you reverse the decision made by the court enforcement officer and vote in favor of granting this building permit. I would like to thank you all again for the opportunity to represent my son and his wife, Ashley, in this matter and for allowing me to do the first two meetings through Zoom. I have always appreciated and valued people like you that serve their communities in this capacity. So if at any time you felt disrespected by the frequent interruptions during our previous meetings, you have my sincerest apologies. Thank you all for your time and consideration when making your decision. I would now just like to ask that my son, Michael, be allowed to make a brief statement and introduce himself through Zoom. Thank you.
How's it going, everybody? My name is Michael Reynolds. I'm here speaking for me and my wife, Ashley. She's currently caring for our newborn child. Thank you for the opportunity to share this brief statement with you so that I can explain the events leading up to buying this land. This lot was listed by Morton and Fervish as a buildable lot. The last line in the listing, which says snowmilling access would be right out your front door, is what really caught my eye because that is exactly what Ash and I were looking for. When we went to look at the lot, the land was already marked with blue ribbons and a line that extended 250 feet from the water where the resource protection portion was located. Before I bought the land, I was instructed to pick a spot outside the resource protection area where I would like the house to be and to mark it off so the soil test for the septic could be done, which was a condition of the sale. Once completed, the application of the subsurface wastewater disposal system was approved by the site evaluator, Elizabeth Flynn, on February 2, 2021, which was prior to us purchasing the land, which was later submitted along with our building permit application. We were then given permission from Bailey to start clearing, and I believe at this time that she mentioned we might be able to push the house back up to 50 feet in the resource protection if we wanted to. Never at any time before we bought this land were we given any reason to believe it was not a buildable lot. So when it was implied at different times and in different ways during both previous meetings, that this should have been a red flag to anyone thinking about buying it, it would like to explain why I don't believe that is true. Well, it's true, the appraisal report received by Bailey couldn't say for certain whether or not it was a buildable lot prior to the sale. It did not state that it was unbuildable. It said if necessary, the lot could be reconfigured to comply. Whether or not Bailey said that in her email exchange with the seller, I can't say, but doesn't change the fact that that was the information I was given to go on, so I never saw that as a red flag. By this point, everything I mentioned about marking out where the house would go and having the soil test done and the septic application approved and being given permission to begin clearing had all happened prior to us buying the land. So we were never given any reason to think that it was not a buildable lot. At this point, there were no red flags of any kind that should have made us question buying it. We were beyond excited about it, so we moved forward with the purchase. The only red flag that might have stopped us in our tracks was the residents we faced from the church, but we never saw that coming. How could we? When the representative from the church made the assertion during the second meeting that the price I paid clearly reflected the ambiguity about the lot being buildable and that everyone knew that I would like to explain why I think he's wrong about that. The reason I was given by two different people I know who looked into buying the lot prior to me, Tyler Filbrick and Larry Coobes, the reason they ultimately decided against buying it was because they would be prevented by putting the house down by the river due to resource protection. They both also thought that the asking price was too high, that while you might have frontage on the river, that is not equivalent to having that kind of frontage on the lake. I knew I would never be able to afford a lot like that directly on Rangeley Lake, but that didn't matter to us either. This lot was exactly what we were looking for for the reason I already mentioned about the snowmilling access. I have been renting a house every winter for many years now at a considerable expense, which is why we started looking into buying the land here in the first place. Before buying this land, I also learned that the listing agent, that someone else besides the two people I just mentioned, had looked into buying it and that had even got a lawyer involved, but because they would be prevented from building down by the water, they also decided against buying it. The listing agent also told me she believed the required easement for the church was a condition on the sale, which was potentially a downfall for anybody interested in buying it.
Hey, Michael, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Do you have any information that your mother hasn't already covered? Because, I mean, we've given you 35 minutes.
Yeah, no, this is just my first meeting. I didn't want to introduce myself and just give my statement. That's all.
Yeah, because we held a public hearing the last time around. We extended you the courtesy of, you know, like I say, 35 minutes.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to wrap it up, that's fine.
So, you know.
No, we can leave it at that if that's what you would like. I just wanted to read that.
Well, it's certainly what I like, but I think it's what's practical.
Yep, that's fine with me.
You guys have any comments? Was there any rebuttal to what she said? Because she directly referenced the church in the letter and brought up issues that she said were untrue and she explained why she thought that was actually the church one. So you can go ahead.
The church stands on its submissions. They're perfectly clear. You understand the issues. All the arguments have been outlined in some detail. I would turn that around. If you have questions based on what has been presented to you, you would like us to respond to, we will be happy to do so, but we're not going to make a statement. We're not going to read the same thing we read submitted prior. Don't call it strong.
No, I was, I'd really like to hear from the lawyer, her opinions, why she made those opinions and possibly some evidence. I think that's a big kitchen point for us.
Yeah.
Is she available?
I'm here on Zoom.
Okay. Kristen, I asked you some questions based on the feelings of the board the last time around, and you responded. Do you have anything that you would like to add in person?
Yes, just a little bit, but I just wanted to make sure too that the appellantants have received my notes here and have those too.
Yes.
I haven't received any.
Those are questions.
Nor have we.
These are questions we asked the lawyer. Those are her answers.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to give them a minute to scan that or maybe we could go over these one by one? I just don't want to go too fast.
Yeah, no, give them a few minutes.
Okay, so I think where to start would be that when it comes to a zoning ordinance, we have illegal or non-conforming lots, uses, and structures. And those concepts are often blurred when we talk about these things, but in terms of applying the ordinance, it's really important to distinguish them. So for instance, the house itself here is a residential structure. That residential structure isn't allowed in the resource protection district, except if it were to meet certain standards under the shoreline zoning portion of the ordinance. So that's the structure. Each structure sits on a lot, and that lot has to meet certain, what we call dimensional requirements, which would be frontage and lot area. And that frontage pertains to the lot, and the lot is, you know, essentially the four corners of any piece of property as it's been deeded out. And so this particular lot is both a lot in the resource protection district and a lot in the downtown commercial district, and it spans both. You know, there's no lot line that kind of follows the district line. So the question would be, this is a lot in the resource protection district. I think we'd all agree that it's at least partially in that district. So what is the frontage for that lot? And frontage being defined as, you know, the lot line that goes along the road on which access is provided. So the frontage for that lot, which yes, is in resource protection district in part, is not meeting the standard of 150 feet. And so I don't think there's a way to read that out. It is a requirement that pertains to any lot that is located in whole or in part in the resource protection district.
Where does it say that, Krista?
It's more that it doesn't say the opposite. So the.
So I have some, I just have one quick question for you.
Yeah.
So you're saying that if I have 1,000 acres and 501 of it are in resource protection and 499 of it are in commercial, I have to follow the resource protection rules because part of my lot is in resource protection?
As to the lot area and lot frontage, yep.
Do you have case precedence and why are you citing that proves that?
Well, when you are interpreting or applying an ordinance, you start first with the plain language of that ordinance. Okay? And the ordinance says that for a lot located in the resource protection district, it has a frontage requirement of 150 feet. So that plain language now, is there any ambiguity to it? I don't think that there is. What I would be looking for is something that says, for instance, that frontage is applicable where it fits, you know, for frontage located in the resource protection district or for frontage located in the DCD district, that this is the length requirement. It doesn't say that. It says that the lot has to have the frontage. And this lot is the four corners of the lot that does span both districts.
So you said in your, oh, I think it was question number one, the answer, you said basically halfway down the paragraph, "There is nothing in the ordinance that applies the frontage requirement only to the district which that frontage sits." And there is nothing in the ordinance specifying that where a lot spans two districts, the less restrictive standards apply, but yet you fail to state the obvious, and that is the inverse of that. There's also nothing in the ordinance that says the opposite. So how can you pick one over the other?
Because, again, the frontage applies to the lot. So if you look at, for instance, the definition of a non-conforming lot, that's a lot that doesn't meet the frontage or lot area requirement. And so that 150 feet, again, pertains to the lot. And now we have explicit language that says that's the frontage requirement for any lot that sits in the RP zone. So if we were to just straight read that out, that would be going against principles of ordinance interpretation that have been placed for hundreds of years. So what I would be looking for is something that is clear language saying that there is an exception to what's otherwise written there, that this is the frontage requirement. And I don't find that anywhere in the ordinance. And in fact, you know, there's another general principle of applying ordinances that says that where two provisions are conflicting, the more restrictive control.
So you also answered question three, and it confuses me more. It says, "My interpretation that where the lot spans two districts, the more restrictive law requirements, including minimum lotside fund exceptor, apply to the lot. Why is that? What do you have a precedent in case law to support that?"
Because this ordinance is setting forth minimum standards for development. That's the whole point of a frontage requirement. And so if you had, I mean, take your example of the 1,000 acres and flip it and now make it 1,000 acres that are in the DCD and five acres that are in the RP. I mean, sorry, flip it again. 1,000 acres that are in the RP and five acres that are in the DCD. The fact that the frontage happens to be in the DCD, it doesn't seem to make sense to me that you would be allowed to have this now substandard RP lot.
But it's not clearly stated.
But I think it is. It is clearly stated that lots in the RP district have to have frontage of 150 feet.
Yes, for that portion of the lot, yes. It does say. What I'm saying is there's nothing specific in the ordinance that says that you shall apply the resource protection requirements to the whole lot if part of it is in resource protection. Can you tell me where in the ordinance it says that?
It says that for a lot in the RP district, it has to have frontage of 150 feet. Period. That front, every lot has to have frontage of 150 feet. So if you take this example, put it aside, and now make it not a lot frontage requirement, but a lot area requirement, what if there is a tiny lot in the RP district that would be allowed in the DCD, but only a very small portion of that lot is in DCD? It would seem ridiculous, wouldn't it, to say, oh, well, you know, you can build on that RP lot even though it's not whatever it is, a half acre, because a sliver of it is in the DCD, which has no minimum lot area requirement?
Right, but as long as you maintain in the DCD area and don't exceed into the resource protection, then you're meeting all the requirements for a building lot in the downtown commercial district, correct?
No, well, in this case, you're not meeting the standards for a lot. Again, it's the lot. It's the four corners of that lot, and that particular lot has to have frontage of 150.
So you're assuming that because part of the lots are resource protection, then the whole lot has to be ruled. So you're assuming that because part of the lots are resource protection, then the whole lot has to be ruled as a resource protection guidelines without any precedent in case law to say that?
I don't need precedent or case law to say that because the ordinance is telling you.
There is none.
The ordinance is telling you that directly. It is saying that there is a frontage requirement pertaining to lot. Again, the lot is the four corners as described in that deed. So if you're going to have an exception to what's there, it has to be written clearly expressly in the ordinance and that's not there. The frontage pertains to the lot, it doesn't pertain to the place in which it is located.
Kristin, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
If they took and gave or sold the resource protection portion of the lot to a butter and, and retained the downtown commercial district portion by itself, would they be able to build on that law?
Yes. For clarification, would that be, would we be, sorry, is that okay if I ask a question? Um, would that be possible to just have on, split the lot on paper, have Michael still own everything, but make them two separate lots and keep the resource protection part separate? And just, and that way, and just build on the downtown commercial?
That's probably over my head.
I might too, but, and I also just wondered, I was, when she was saying that part earlier, I just wanted to reiterate that Bailey said there is nothing in the code that says you have to use the code where the majority of the land sits, rather than where the road from it is.
Well, she's saying under resource protection, it says the law, which is the entire lot is one unit.
And then she also says that it's no consequence that it was advertised as resource protection, that you should be able to look at each portion separately.
No, all I was saying with that, and I want to be clear about that.
And the memorandum, that's.
While it, while it. Can I speak to that? Oh, yeah, all I'm saying, when I said that was, you know, someone may have been misled by a listing, but that doesn't change what's shown unfortunately on the town's zoning map. And, and their recourse would lie with the sellers and with the broker, unfortunately.
But on the zoning map, it's in downtown commercial also.
Yeah.
Uh, can the owner of the lot, Michael, sold the lot to his mother? Created a lot and sold it to his mother? And she would have a lot of resource protection, he would have a lot solely in, you know, downtown commercial district?
The lot itself in the resource protection district would have to meet the lot standards, so um, we would have to look at, you know, the, the lot area and whether it meets that minimum, et cetera.
Yeah, that would be, wouldn't that be creating a backlog?
Exactly, I'd, I'd have to look at the whole scheme of what's being done and.
So if this scenario, you're saying.
Until we had an application.
So Krista, you're saying that this law falls under resource protection. They bought the lot, but you're saying that it can't be a lot because it doesn't have a frontage. So they are in fact a backlog now.
No, just because it doesn't have enough frontage doesn't make it a backlot. A backlot would be a lot that is not physically located with access.
Well, I think what Ryan's saying is if you divided the lots along the district lines, then the resource protection law would become a backlog because it would have no access.
Right, and I think that, um, whoever it was that mentioned the sale to the butter, for instance, maybe that's, that's an option, but again, I, I don't know the area of that lot, that portion of the lot. And it's really not our job here tonight to, to solve the problem.
Oh.
You know, to figure out if there is one.
Right.
Just a good question, Jim.
Sure.
Um, when we drove, we drove out and we saw that the damn road goes right to Michael's land. And like I said, on that side, he owns almost 300 feet. Obviously, the width of the road that comes to that, is there anything that would prevent him? I could, because I know roads, existing roads can be extended, extending it into his land and enough in order to get, meet that 150 feet of frontage?
I guess that would be up to the town where, you know, I don't even know if the town considers that a town road, I would think.
I, I did see that.
It's not applied, so.
I did see that even if they, they would, even if, even though you can technically extend it, they probably wouldn't because resource protection, if you have access coming in somewhere else, they say you have to use that access. So by that definition, they, they would insist that we use the access on the downtown commercial, where he does have the frontage.
Yeah. I think, you know, I think, I think we've come to the point where, um, I myself have heard enough of what there is and I would be inclined to turn down uh, the request for reconsideration and side with the town attorney. Uh, but it seems that you might have some options for yourself that you need to explore, but that's not really our job.
Can I ask the, is it okay if I ask you a question or something?
Sure.
In her memorandum, she starts off, I think it's right at the beginning, she says that her opinions are constrained only by the issues that the church raised, which I find weird because the church never once made any mention of anything to do with resource protection frontage or anything. Their whole contention was that we didn't have the frontage in downtown commercial and they were wrong about that. And so she took, uh, and she, she mentioned that they, they had brought up the 38.4.4, which they did not. So the things that the church, church brought forward in their letter that she read and then responded to, she responded to things that were not even brought up at that time. She just, you know.
Well, she's responding, um, and Kristen can talk to this herself, but it seems like she's responding to how this whole application interacts with the ordinance as the town range. You know, once, once she's brought into the story, that's, that's her, that's her job to, to pull apart the ordinance of the town range, let you see how this application applies to it.
So when Bailey says there's nothing.
Reference the church, but it's not necessarily a guiding point.
Okay, I.
Kristin, do you want to speak to that?
Uh, yeah, so I don't, unfortunately, I'm trying to jockey a lot of screens here, but I don't have the church's original letter in front of me, but I know that they did address dimensional requirements generally, that it doesn't meet the dimensional requirements. And so when I was asked to review whether this lot was buildable, I looked at all of the dimensional requirements, meaning um, lot area, lot frontage. And that led me into this whole analysis of whether the frontage applied to the lot or just to the portion of, of the lot in, um, DCD or RP.
So when, when, to the town attorney, when Bailey says that there's something in the code that says you have to use the code where the majority of the land is, what makes you decide to do that?
Well, that's exactly what I.
There's no precedence for that.
That's exactly the, the rule that I did apply. There's nothing in the ordinance that says you have to use the portion of the land in which that frontage sits. My point of view is that the frontage pertains to the lot. You know, there's, you know, four corners of that lot.
But the frontage is in downtown commercial.
Exactly, and I don't think it matters where that frontage is located, unfortunately. I think that every lot has frontage, backlot that has none. Uh, but where it has frontage and it spans into RP, that frontage has to be 150 feet.
Even though the house is sitting in the downtown commercial and not being into the resource protection at all?
Correct, because this goes back to where I started, which is that's a structure and the structure actually has no bearing on the legality of the lot. The lot is, does it meet the minimum lot size requirement and does it meet the frontage requirement?
She's applying the standards to the law and not to the district.
I understand, I just don't understand what.
The illegality.
I get what she's, what she's saying, but what, it's still, to me, doesn't make sense.
In the code, it says you need 150 foot of road frontage in a, for a resource protection law. Because your lot has resource protection on it, she's assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the whole lot has to conform to the 150 foot because a portion of it is in resource protection.
But Bailey said there's no precedent for that, for doing that.
Excuse me, this is the town council, this is not an assumption. This is a construction of a statute, that's your job, that's your training, that's your expertise. Um, and further comments?
My only comment is that, uh, back when Stony Batter, and before, whatever, went to create this, they intentionally put in a 50 foot strip of land to be able to access that backlog. Now, did they put in a 50 foot piece of land and not a 150 foot piece of land? Because they were going to sell that land and make sure that nothing was built on it? I suspect not, I suspect the reason 50 foot was put in there was to provide access for someone to build on the commercial district portion of that lot. Um, where the ordinance or the code fails to say something, you automatically assume it means something else. It's too little if you should read a joint. And as far as lawyers' opinions go, lawyers, they're like everybody else. They all have their own opinion, that's why they go to court. And you know what, in court, some lawyers win and some lawyers lose. And the ones that lose, apparently their opinion was not correct. So it's not unheard of that a lawyer would have an incorrect opinion. That is all I'm going to say.
Yeah, that's. Um, okay.
Okay.
I would, I guess at this point, make a motion that we turn down the application for reconsideration. And based on the law not meeting minimum road frontage requirements of 150 feet. That's it. Anybody want something? Anybody else want to make a motion? No. Um, go over. I'm going to try to figure out a speak.
What it does bring up in this section of the which is really important down there. And that goes to the strength uh, of our code. When we have to basically assume something because something is not said. And to me, it tells you that we don't have a good code as far as we've run into this a number of times. That's probably why we're here, yeah. And so, but where we lose and we fail is that we don't move forward to do something.
Well, yeah, this is a long discussion, but I'm sure, I think, you know, over the years of writing ordinances and having been on the planning board and stuff, the first town that writes infallible ordinance is going to be the first one. No one's, yeah, no one's accomplished that, yeah. Exactly, right. So, you know, that's why we have lawyers. They pick it apart. Um, not to say that people in town don't have experience and haven't seen things go one way or another.
Wouldn't it be okay if I ask you one more question? Just about the part that I brought up, because in the first two meetings, I had no idea that Michael had so much on that land had been done already before he decided to buy it. Like the, like things being marked out, that the septic system plan was approved by the town. You know, like all of this stuff.
The soils, right.
I mean, by the soil, right, this, for the soil test. Um, just if that has any bearing on it, you know, and it like, like the town, like Bailey even said, she, she knew, she assumed it was a buildable lot, all this was already taking place. You know, there was nothing until the church got involved that was, would have stopped him from building on that.
As long as somebody has standing to go ahead and solicit a soil test.
Yeah, I understand that.
Um, that's not going to tell you whether the lot's buildable or not, it's just going to tell you the soils pass or don't pass. You know, really doesn't have any bearing on whether the lots.
Well, I mean, I guess it, just because it's a, that whole, it's the whole transaction of buying the lot based on knowing all this is done, like, we're good to go, you know? He bought it, definitely bought it in good faith, not.
I'm not saying he did, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Kristen brought up the point that the representation of the law being buildable may not have been accurate.
So, but it, it just goes to show you that you could pick up the zoning map and go around and look at all the lots that have the most restrictive requirements and apply that to the whole lot. Well, it's because. We just go to buy a piece of land and a portion of that land has a restrictive zone in it. You might as well admit that that whole lot is going to give you that.
Not necessarily, as long as you meet the road frontage requirements, you're in.
Correct, road frontage and lot area, that's the only two pieces that, that this particular role would apply to. Anything else would apply, would pertain to the structure or to the use. And then you can always put that structure or that use on the part of the property where it's allowed.
Like they said, they thought they were giving him the frontage by that, those 50 feet. They, they technically, they were, you know?
Unfortunately, you can probably go around Rangeley and the plantations and find some really screwed up laws.
Well, when we drove down to the end of Damn Road, I mean, that house down there, we actually met the neighbors who were really nice and we had a nice conversation with them. And he was saying how they allowed him, it used to, I think they used to lease the land and then they gave them the opportunity to buy it and allowed him to build, even though it's like.
She said 75 feet off.
Uh, so technically it was in resource protection and they allowed him to build his house there.
Years ago.
Yeah, it was years ago.
I just had to read this up. Yeah, well, I think the idea of this, you know, here again, having been around when this was written, the idea of this was that in the classic downtown commercial district of Rangeley, you could build to the sidewalk. The, someplace in the ordinance, it says you can build no further route than the extent of your neighborhood buildings. So, uh, and you can have, you can have 100% block coverage in downtown commercial too, which can, and the other. Uh, so I think that, that's where the less restrictive thing comes in. It, there was an attempt to try and keep the character of the downtown, you know, although building facades, all of that instead of forcing people to go away from that.
Based on, uh, what legalists told us, whether we like it or not, that's the way the ordinance is, that's the way the code is written. So, uh, having said that, uh, I don't like it, but I will say my motion.
All in favor? I have a two, one decision. So, um, where do you go from here? Uh, you can continue on down this path and take it to district court. Kristen, can you, you're probably better explaining where the, where their pathways are from here.
Uh, yes, it's Superior Court actually, and it's filed within 30 days from tonight's decision. So although we'll follow this up with a written decision, it's important to understand that the appeal deadline runs from tonight.
I can get through to the Superior Court.
To the Superior Court, yep, using a, a process called a Rule 80B appeal.
I didn't, I didn't understand.
80B?
Yep, 80B.
Um, um, seems like you do have another path that the town attorney's already indicated should be in agreement with, and that is uh, sell or give or something to resource protection portion of the lot.
So if you were to sell that to me and have it.
But I don't know about the legality of selling it to a blood relative, but you could, I think. But I don't know about the legality of selling it to a blood relative, but you could, I think, I think, actually, I think it's pretty clear that it would have to go to another.
Yeah, why?
Because then it would be contiguous with the.
But there's two different people, even though we're family.
Because you're creating a backlog.
And a backlog has to be five acres.
Yeah.
Would, would he just be able to keep it in his name and have the lot split on paper like S B did?
It's the same thing. They're creating a backlog. It has to go to another bar. If you. You can't create a lot without access. Uh, but the access could be needed right away, but you can't, I believe, but you can't, you basically can't create a lot without access. And you wouldn't have road frontage to create. If you wanted to find. So.
And what about that access coming in through DM road? Is that something we could pursue about having the road extended to give us the frontage? Because if we did that, then we would have the frontage in the resource.
Is there a deed that shows that there's that's access?
Um, it is in the original deed from Stony Batters. It is not in Michael's deed because they had that other access. They did not list it on his deed. I don't know why that didn't transfer because it's the exact same wording that everything besides that. But it's.
It also qualifies as a road.
The, the actual road itself, we thought would have needed to be extended to, to reach this land, but it doesn't with the pin is right there.
That's another thing, the damn road. I'm not sure what the construction standards are on the damn road, but if.
But it, but.
You, if you, if you somehow could gain frontage on the damn road, then the damn road would have to be built to current town standards.
But it would, we actually still wouldn't be able to, even if we had it, like say theoretically, we have, we extend the road, we have that coverage. And we have that frontage. The, I believe the planning board would not allow it anyway. They would want us to use the other access because it states in the town code. If you have another access, you have to go with that access. That's why it doesn't make any sense.
We're not. Really here to solve that problem. We're here just to give you, I'm just trying to help you all over the path forward, you know, some.
And I haven't seen whether Bailey's in the room, but why don't, why don't we just plan that we can have a, a meeting and go over. What some options might be if there are any, but I, I agree. It's not the right venue right now to do that.
Between you and the applicant?
Yep, and, and Bailey.
How soon could that happen? So if we, if we have to file an appeal within thirty days, could we make that happen? Soon, like we're only.
Yeah, happy to make that happen by Zoom, you know, up to Bailey's schedule.
Okay, because if we knew that we had an alternative route, you know, then we wouldn't have to take it to court, which we are prepared to do. But that would be helpful if we did that.
Kristen, is it appropriate for the church to be involved in this all?
Only if they have a potential solution they want to be a part of.
Well, possibly, but word of others, is there not a legal entitlement to participation notice?
No, there's not.
No.
There's not because this is just a staff meeting. It's not a, a board proceeding where there's due process. Any application, of course, would have to, you know, come in the normal course. This is just sort of guidance.
I think you just represent the towns. You're just representing the town's position on any of these possible scenarios, correct?
Yep, that is true.
I think we'd like to lodge a tentative objection depending on how this thing actually unfolds.
A tentative objection.
Or whatever that's worth.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just curious, Kristen, is this something that the town does when someone's denied something? We use our attorney to work with them to see if they can get it to work. It's just something that we do all the time.
No, but this is a pretty tricky situation and since I'm going to end up getting canceled anyway, it seems more efficient to be in the room when it's being discussed.
So you would be doing it in the. In the long run to prevent a court case. Is that what you're saying?
I, I just want to make sure that the code enforcement officer gets whatever advice she's giving them correct.
So basically, these folks are going to present other possibilities to the code enforcement officer and then she's going to check with you for your opinion on those other possibilities. This is not a negotiating section, session between the town attorney and these applicants to see if they can get what they'd like.
No, this is an abbreviated version of what would normally be a back and forth between the CEO and, and me about the legality of what's being proposed.
Okay, just want to make that clear. Thank you. Okay, so I think that's it for us on the matter right now. Um, if it does go to court. The court would either find in favor of you or find in favor of our finding. If they find in favor of you, it would be sent back to you, the code enforcement officer or us for, with directions on how to proceed. So, that wasn't covered, but just from prior experience.
Okay, I was just going to ask you if you knew how long that process, I know I have thirty days to do it. Is there any history?
I guess it depends on how much they have from.
And so we definitely need to get a lawyer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. So next thing is new business. We have. Are both the applicants here?
Uh, no, Nickerson is not.
Okay, so why don't we, excuse me, why don't we start? I assume you're representing one. Yes, why don't we start with that? Tell us what.
Yeah, so we're in front of you, preparing for the side step back. We met with the planning board and on site visit and they approved what we wanted to do. And I don't know if you guys have the, oh, paperwork. I did bring a, a little larger plot plan, which might be easier to see.
That'd be great for someone. You have the mold of one, correct?
We have.
Yes. Yeah, so if you guys had the lake. Here, the lake is here. Lot comes pretty flat and then it's really steep right here where the camp is now. And then it comes to the back and then it's steep again. And then it flattens out, but because of this wedge. It's a really unusual, so they've gotten letters from the butter here. There's lots of trees and houses down. And then there's some trees here with the other lot. And so these abutters are through the woods, their driveways down around. But these abutters here, they all have a stable lane driveway that comes in. And so they're, they all sort of drive right by the, this well, the driveway is like right here. And so these abutters park here, their house is here.
So do they share a driveway?
Yeah, stable lane sort of comes along and there's like two or three offshoots.
This is what we got, so.
Oh, okay, so they are. Right here, so stable lane comes in and so it comes down here.
It bisects always.
Oh, yeah.
Like that?
Yep. And so this, this person, they sort of park at this, all of this wedge right back in here.
Yep.
Did you get that one? Yeah. Um, so that's why we're, we're already, you know, and we looked at the planning board about moving the camp back because it's. Pretty understructured, really tired structure it's had it.
So this is a complete replacement.
Complete replacement and we can't, we also have a new, we have a cesspool. And so we're replacing that with a new septic design and that septic design, I don't know if she passed you that also, but that was with the planning board's papers. And he needed three or four variances through that to get that. New system to. Work there. So the planning board looked at, can we move it back? Can we twist it? Can we whatever? So it was sort of determined that. The best place where the house is now is for the, where the new build will be and our thirty percent. Is two and a half feet along the side and, and our addition is behind, but because of this hill, that's sort of where the, the garage has to be.
Okay.
So the garage is going to be up and the house is going to be down a little bit.
So it's here to us because it doesn't meet seven.
Right, so on one side I'm at seventeen feet and on the other side I'm at fourteen feet.
Okay, and both of ours are in agreement with.
They are, the letters should be in there.
I just saw the one from Ellen.
Uh, let's see, you should have one from subtly. And I sent him a two different emails, so. Hopefully she got both in there. Oh, that's the, that's the one through the woods.
Yeah.
And Kim Boldig is owner.
You're good both. Sure that's both. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so there is a shed here that is on Stewart's, on the subtly side that we're going to take down because that story we can put garage.
Which will make them happier.
Yeah, and the two of them have gotten together. Planted trees there and stuff.
Septic variances.
So the septic variance, we needed a five foot to the sideline and then fifteen foot to the house. And Joe Stevenson did that just recently, did a nice job with it, trying to step it downhill and that should be included in there too. Previously, Beth Flynn had done one years ago and then we didn't do anything, sort of let it expire, so we're going to do another one.
And this one's actually going to be flatter. It's not going to have the mound.
Sort of step downhill a little bit, a little nicer. Yeah. I don't think the H H G is in. And I don't think I brought the septic. And anyway, he just did it and he stated just recently in the last month.
Bailey can leave a folder vision.
No.
Okay, she only gave us the.
Okay. Yeah, that same, that one's tough to read.
Since we just, I'm not real familiar with this because I just forgot.
Oh, nice. Okay.
They were emailed to.
Yeah.
Like the last week, yes. The last, no.
Okay.
Yeah, we submitted it the day the planning board, right after that.
It was like four attachments on the bottom of an email. Three attachments. So sorry, this isn't Shoreland District then.
Yeah, it's on Range Lake.
Yep.
And the hundred foot line is back here. Is the heavy line.
Yep.
So we're, we're beyond that. So what we're just not meeting is those, the wedge side setbacks back there.
For both the garage and the septic system. And how far?
Well, the septic, he's got a variance. I don't think you have to rule on that. He's licensed, huh?
How did he get a variance?
Uh, it's on his H H G stuff. He's got like four variances on there. Yeah, so I think the state licensed plumbing inspector weighs in on that, so.
I assume with that, it's a way.
Pardon? Yeah. Uh.
The plumbing inspector would bring them to us when we have.
Oh, interesting. Maybe he does. Yeah, has him on there. I know Beth had a couple lately, but yeah, she did, so, yeah.
They tear down the whole house and place that we've been in.
Yep, which is sort of shows right here.
It's fifty two feet inside of. The total house is fifty two feet.
Right. And only thirty feet of it is within the setback there.
You're just looking over the garage.
Right.
And the corner of that house, which.
Right.
Still drives me nuts when you see these pie shaped properties everywhere, two hundred feet wide at the front and ten feet wide at the back.
Luckily, luckily, there's no trees back here that we have to take down. There's no trees anywhere that we're taking down.
No, it's just a driveway. I mean, it's just.
Right.
You know, just sprawled.
Yeah, because you can see here, the driveway comes along and the, the well is right on the edge of the woods.
And you can, you can eliminate that. If you take any piece of land. And you divide the lot you want to make it somewhat uniform, you're always going to end up with that one lot or two lots, but. Pie shaped or, or the flagpole lots or some.
Yeah, the other lots aren't bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean. For me, if the abutters. Have no problem with it.
And there's on this side, on the seventeen foot piece here, there's a big boulder kind of thing. So when you drive it, there's a boulder and the next neighbors is down. The subtles are down there, so they may even look out up there. They're sort of like down here, looking out this way.
Yeah.
And then this person's sort of looking out that way, so it's like, we're not against.
The improvements you're going to make on your property.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we want to be able to spend more time there and just a very tiny camp. We have three kids. We have three, they're significant and other and it's just a very small camp. We're about, we're all the camp.
Yeah.
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 Well, then I'll make the motion to approve the variances for the Bark and Kim Boldig lot. I'm second. All in favor? So we scared the hell out of you with the last one.
Yeah.
I was hoping you were going to run out of town so while time and say, well.
We're here so we get through it all. All right.
Nickerson obviously is not here. We have another, we have another appeal turned in today.
Today? Say that again?
We had another appeal turned in today. So, um, I don't know if you guys want to wait till we begin next month or if you want to jump this out maybe to. And I might say, as much as I enjoy meeting you guys, I think we're out.
Have a good night. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
This could be entertaining. So you're saying the Nickerson one is a.
The Nickerson variance, he, he, apparently it's supposed to be here, but it's not. So I don't know if you want to review it and see what you can do.
Well, what is the variance for? Branch requests to allow the construction. External set of stairs attached to the garage structure. opposed stairs would be set back.
Stairs are going to be too close between the farm road. There it is. It's really hard to read the site plan. Sometimes you get misinformation and stuff up. They ask you to give a scale, two scale drawing.
Yeah.
Now, if they put it on a piece of graphic like that's fine, but.
I can't believe it.
There's nothing that says what the scale is.
Down on the bottom, there is a corner that says one square equals five.
One square.
With a very long, it's very large screen.
Looks like five eight.
I know, but it's five feet.
So this, this proposed shed is a pretty good sized shed.
Yeah.
It's two stories tall. You know it's going to have living claws upstairs.
Yeah. And they need to set up exterior steps to go upstairs. In the absence of a site visit, I think I'd at least like to get Bailey's input on what's going on.
Right.
And then I should table this. Yeah, till next meeting. You said we have another appeal?
Yes. Mr. Silver turned it on and he'll. I haven't worked on it yet.
For the diaphragm.
It's for the diaphragm.
It's for what?
The diaphragm. I, he gave me plans and they're huge. I don't know how they make costs for them. So.
Well, we can look at it. We're just, we can look at. Most of the diaphragm takes that. Sorry for trading. So you want to meet in two weeks, you said?
And that's on my message.
I'm really messed up this summer on Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
Okay.
So if we can meet a Monday or a Thursday, that would be better for me, depending on how that works for you guys.
I'm available. That's not an issue.
I'm available on Thursday, so. Well, Monday's work.
Yeah.
So we set it for Monday meeting?
Monday, um, let's verify that that's not what's on the meeting. Sorry. I can't see from over there. So today is the.
So six.
Word of six, yeah, twenty seven. The nineteenth would be a, a board of select.
That's twenty twenty one. The weekend calendar. Yeah, that one's not.
So it's, that, that Monday is going to be a fourth one. So we can either go the following or.
What's the blue?
That airport, it would be, it's 4:30 in the afternoon, they're out.
Yeah, maybe do it about last week.
The 26.
We have the firm up to go next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to at least have time to look through some stuff. You know, I saw this, but for some reason I didn't see the board. So, I don't know.
Let me pull those, the, the plans for that really quick, if you guys can just kind of look over really quick, just.
Yeah, let, do you want to close?
Because they're really big.
Do you want to close the meeting so we can zoom it down?
Well, we got a few other things, a couple things we need to vote on.
Yeah, we need to, we need to vote on. Team this variance request for, for the Nickersons to the next meeting on the. Probably don't know what the deal is because that's what we're counting. What, it would be. While pulling the votes.
That would be the 25th.
Yeah. So I made a motion to move the Nickerson variance discussion to July 25th. So.
Yeah, all in favor?
Okay.
Adjourn the meeting.
Bye.
What other, I would say that we would, I would like to make a motion, we vote and sign harassment, sexual harassment policy.
Oh, you don't have to make.
We don't, no, we just have to sign it.
Yes, mandatory, yeah.
I'm all for that.
Yeah.
I make a motion to.
Were you going to try and get out of it?
Yes, I'm going to try to get on the ethics that you want, oh, not the sexual. I'll make the motion to adjourn the zoning board appeals meeting at 7:31 on the 7th, thanks.
All in favor? Hey, can you zoom?
Yeah. Don't forget to read your, remote participation policy, your harassment policy.
No, I think, which goes, what you said those out, it was like a bunch of attachments on the bottom, you probably, I think the agenda was on there.